Okay, the... This meeting of the City Council of Raleigh Meadows is hereby called order. If you please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts is absent. Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Deistis.
Here.
With five present and one absent, we do have a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television network. May I have... First order of business is to approve the minutes from the June 19 Committee of the Hall meeting and the June 26 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Gallo... Alderman Gallo has made the motion. And is there a second? Mike Cannon, thank you very much. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? No. Saying none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. There is no motion to deviate. The mayor pro tem does not have a report. Are there any ward reports this evening? No, no, no. Saying none, the meeting will be open to the pub... No, there's... Do we have a signature? So, since no one has signed up to speak, the meeting will not be open to the public for 20 minutes this evening. And we'll move right into ordinances. So, ordinance is in for a second reading. A, ordinance number 18-26, grant approval of amendment to the Raleigh Meadows Shopping Center Plan Development and McDonald's Special Use Permit for a second drive-through lane and additional site improvements. This ordinance, if adopted, would allow an amendment to the existing Raleigh Meadows Shopping Center Plan Development and McDonald's Special Use Permit to allow a second drive-through lane and some additional exterior site work. At its meeting held on Tuesday, June 5, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 with two absent to recommend approval for the second drive-through lane and other exterior site improvements. Let's see. Is there a motion to move this ahead? Thank you. Ms. Majikis made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Gallo seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With five in favor and zero opposed, the ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number 18-27, amend section 106-24 of the city for no parking on Keith Court. This ordinance, if adopted, will change the parking restrictions on Keith Court. This street already has no parking signage posted. The current parking prohibition is on the west side of Keith Court. Residents there have requested that this change be changed to prohibit parking on the east side instead. May I have a motion to approve this ordinance? Mr. Baner has made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Gallo has made the second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Saying none, will clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
With five in favor and no one opposing, this ordinance is adopted. Now, we have ordinance in for first reading. Ordinance, Chapter 22, Right of Way Management, Providing for the Regulation of and Application for Small Wireless Facilities and Public Rights of Way. In January of this year, the city adopted an ordinance regulating small cell towers. The ordinance was drafted based on the pending legislation so that the city would have some regulations in place. Since that time, the legislature has passed legislation for small cell towers. This ordinance will allow the city to regulate small cell towers consistent with the final legislation. Is there a motion to move this forward? Mr. Cannon has made that motion, and Ms. Majikis has seconded it. Is there any discussion on this ordinance in for first reading? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Again, with five in favor and no one opposed, this ordinance is moved forward for a second reading. Let's move on to new business. This is a motion to approve payment of bills on July 10, 2018 warrant. The next item of business is a motion to approve the warrant from July 10 as presented by the Finance Department. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Alderman Baner has made the motion. Alderman Gallo has seconded it. Is there discussion on this warrant? Saying none, will clerk please call the roll?
Deistis?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
That brings us to consent resolutions. The next item on the agenda is consent resolutions. It consists of three items, items E through G. At this time, I would like to pull F and G from the consent agenda, meaning that there is no consent agenda. So, we'll go right to item E. It's a resolution number 18R-66, award contract for vehicle lift replacement. This was postponed at the June 26 meeting. The attached resolution was before the council on June 26, at which time the council voted to postpone the resolution to tonight for staff to provide additional information. Staff is continuing to gather additional information. Procedurally, a motion to postpone requires a vote on the matter at the next meeting. However, when the main motion is not complete at the following meeting, it is proper to again postpone the vote... A vote on the question. Since staff requires additional time to gather the information, the resolution should be postponed to July 24. Do I have a motion to postpone? Mr. Cannon has made the motion, and is there a second? Mr. Gallo has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion... I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of union negotiations, AFS CME-5 ILCS 120-2, Section C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and Union Negotiations, Local 150-5 ILCS 120/2, C2 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Is there a second to go into closed session? Mr. Cannon has made a second. Is there any discussion on the vote... On the motion to go into closed session? Mr. Cannon?
Does this mean we're going to go into it tonight, or it be at another time?
No, we'll go into closed session this evening, have a discussion, and then we'll come back out after we've concluded.
Is there any possibility, in light of the fact that Mr. Bud Matts is not here tonight, that we could postpone it till the next meeting?
Um...
Because I think this is an important enough issue that everybody should have a say in what's going on.
Right now, the motion is to postpone for this evening. So, the... I'm sorry, to go into closed session this evening. So, we can take a vote on... We'll take a vote on that, and then if that doesn't... If that passes, then we'll go into closed session this evening. If it doesn't pass, then you can make a motion to postpone to a later date.
Okay, thank you.
So, once again, is there any other further discussion on the motion to go into closed session this evening? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Baner?
Yes.
Deistis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
With a vote of three to two, the motion will pass with a simple majority, so we will go into closed session. Note to the audience that the City Council will be going to closed session, but we will return to open session when we've completed taking our action, and we'll complete the City Council meeting in that time.
We'll go to each other's side.
Yep.
Okay. The City Council is now back in open session, and we will go to Resolution F, number 18-R-67, to approve local 150 union contract. This resolution, if adopted, would approve the union contract for local 150. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move there.
It was -- Ms. Majikis made the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Baner. Is there any discussion on the Resolution 67?
Saying none. Would the clerk please call a vote?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
DeSantis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With a four-to-one vote, this resolution is approved. Ms. Majikis made the motion, and Mr. Baner seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Saying none. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Baner?
Yes.
DeSantis?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With a four-to-one vote, this resolution is approved. Move to other businesses and reports. And mayor appointments, there are none. And mayor proclamations, I have none. Does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No report?
Nope.
Okay. That brings us to city staff reports. The first thing is community items of interest. Mr. Crumstock.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, DeSantis. Obviously, I do have one additional item to what's printed before you, but we do want to thank everybody for coming out, obviously, for some of the community events. But the first thing that I do want to mention is that this Saturday, the parking lot party will be happening between 3:00 p.m. and 10:30 p.m. at the community center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. And again, that's Saturday, July 14th. There will be food and drinks to purchase from food trucks. The music entertainment is a band called Hi-Fi Superstar, and that starts at 7:00 p.m. Please come and enjoy the family event. The next one is, obviously, as you can see throughout the community, there are actually signs out there, but the Friends of the Rolling Meadows Library Summer Books Sale is happening at the library, 3110 Martin Lane, and it will be conducted on Friday, July 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. Saturday, July 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Sunday, July 15th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Find bargains galore, books, CDs, DVDs, audiobooks, and if you're lucky, you'll bump into Alderman Baner or myself on Friday, when we're usually shopping. Obviously, the Rolling Meadows Community Event Foundation will be conducting a fundraiser at Chipotle's at 1211 Gulf Road from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, July 16th. Please bring a flyer that is actually here at City Hall, and please tell the teller that you are supporting the Community Event Foundation. Good thing about it is that this fundraiser, actually, 50 percent of the proceeds are given back to the foundation. We do want to thank everybody, as I mentioned before, all those residents and friends of the Rolling Meadows who attended the second scheduled 2018 Friday Rock and Roll in the Meadows that happened on July 6th. We do appreciate Alderman Majikis for all of her ticket 50/50 work that she was working on that. It was greatly appreciated. The next one is coming for September 7th. The event, again, will take place from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Kimball Hill Park, and we do appreciate Mayor Pro Tem, John DeSantis, for coming out and starting up the Friday Rocks in between wedding preparations and everything else that was going on. If you missed the Saturday, June 23rd Farmers' and Food Truck Event, the next one is scheduled for Saturday, July 21st, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the community church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. And then Saturday, August 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at community church of Rolling Meadows, we will be celebrating its 61st annual Corn Fest and Craft Fair. The Art and Craft Fair actually starts at 10:00 a.m. and goes to 6:00 p.m. And then, obviously, community bike ride will be conducted on Saturday, August 4th, starting at 6:00 p.m. It starts at the community center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. This year, there will be a presentation by Wonder Wheels BMX Stunt Team. And again, that starts at 6:00. The ride actually starts at 7:00 p.m. If you need additional information, please contact the chief at 847-255-2416. And then that actually brings us to National Night Out, which is Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in the Rolling Meadows Community Center, 3705 Pheasant Drive. And then that actually brings us to Friday, August 17th, which will be the Fourth Annual Wine Down by the Creek event that will take place. There will be beer, wine, food to purchase, and music to listen during this event. And then, obviously, we do want to mention that Meadows Cruise Nights are back. We do appreciate Meadows Christian Fellowship at 2401 Kirchhoff Road for doing this on Fridays between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. The item that I actually want to add on is, obviously, this is going to be Deputy City Clerk, Legal Assistant, Ginny Kontunia's last city council meeting before she retires. And I know she doesn't want anything, but what we actually have in the back of the room is a cake and some additional things for her. We do appreciate all that she does. It's obviously a lot to do, all the minutes and everything else like that. I would actually ask the chief to bring it up so she can actually see it, so...
I think we should make her have a speech also.
Well, that might be at the Cal meeting right after, you know? She's very fast by just the clerk for the discussion.
I conduct them.
But we really do appreciate all that she does. I know that she doesn't want anything, but she knows me long enough that I don't always listen to her. But we do appreciate everything, and it does come with a lot of different thoughts.
Aye, matey?
Oh, I love it! Very. Oh, thank you. Thank you, everybody. No, no, thank you. Thank you.
And that's items of interest.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a couple more things before we dive into this pirate cake. Mr. Crumstock, have you got some information for us for the July 17th Committee of the Hall?
We do have a July 17th Committee of the Hall. That would be Ginny Kontunia's last meeting at the Cal meeting, but we do have three items that are...
Her last meeting?
I know, for the city council.
Very, very last.
Very last meeting. After how many years?
Twenty.
Ah, as long as I've been out here.
Yep.
But we do have three items that are scheduled to be presented. We have ISNS brought back now that they're done through the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will be having a discussion about bonds, and then we will be having a discussion about the transportation overall with some of the other comments that were made in some past discussions. We are keeping it at three, thinking that it might be a long night, but those are the three items that we have for the July 17th scheduled.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. Are there any matters not on the agenda this evening? Okay, saying none. Is there a motion to adjourn and eat the pirate cake? Mr. Baner has made the motion. Mr. Gallo has seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's over.